Good afternoon, everyone. I called to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Worrell. And Counselor Peppin.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Bishop William E. Dickerson. Bishop Dickerson II is a deeply respected spiritual leader and community advocate, who I am so happy that I get to call him today to be our clergy. Although born in Virginia, he was raised in Boston and is a graduate of the Boston Latin School. I think he graduated a few years before I did. He's earned degrees in business management, education from Cambridge College, and urban ministry from Gordon Cornwell Theological Seminary. Dickerson's early life was marked by his dedication to community service, inspired by his parents, William Senior and evangelist Alma Dickerson. Dickerson's ministry began formally in 1981 at Good Shepherd Church of God in Christ in Roxbury, Massachusetts, where he was ordained as an elder by 1985. He is the founder of Greater Love Tabernacle in Dorchester, where he has nurtured a robust community outreach environment that extends to health, education, and economic development initiatives. His civic involvement includes roles on various boards and advisory councils, significantly influencing public policy and community welfare in Boston. His recognitions for community and spiritual leadership include awards from Lena Park, the Boston Celtics, and other community organizations. His contributions to community and spiritual life in Boston have proved him to be an indispensable asset to the city of Boston. During my first term, when we were having issues and we were having discussions around community safety, where did we meet? We met at Greater Love Tabernacle because it was a center of really dealing and addressing those issues. So Bishop Dickerson, I thank you for your leadership. It doesn't stop with you. It goes on to your son, who is a city employee here. So I'm just so grateful that we get to have you with us to lead us in invocation. Thank you. And after he gives his invocation, we'll be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Dickerson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Ruth Z. Lujin, and former Counselor Flynn, and to all of the councils that are here, and to guests, my Counselor Brian Worrell, and everyone that's here. With respects to all faith traditions, let's just bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together for the open up this session of the Boston City Council as they conduct the business of the city. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would strengthen, Lord God, our president of this council, Lord. We pray that you will guide her, Lord, throughout the challenges that she faces, Lord, ahead. And I pray to God for unity. I pray that unity will exist on this council like never before. I pray that peace will prevail. As the prophet Jeremiah stated, "Seek the peace of the city, for as it prospers, so will you." I pray for peace, Lord, to go throughout the city of Boston and beyond. I pray, Heavenly Father, that you will be done in this council. Bless this session and bless all the work that the counselors do from day to day. Let your peace be with them. With respects to all faith traditions, in Jesus' name, thank God, amen.
Amen. And I recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Bishop Dickerson, again, for all that you do for our city. Mr. Clerk, will you please note for the record that Counselor Worrell has joined us and is present? Anyone else? Okay, great. We are now on to presentations. The counselor who will be doing the presentation is not yet with us. I do want to thank Gays for Good for being here with us, Barb Barney, everyone, State Representative John Moran from the 9th Suffolk District. Thank you for being with us. I know that you're doing this presentation alongside Counselor Fernandez Anderson. We honor your presence and we thank you. Gays for Good for being here and for all you do for our city. So, thank you. We'll be moving on. Mr. Clerk, we've amended the attendance to reflect that Counselor Worrell is present. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is approval of the minutes in the meeting of May 1st, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0815?
Docket number 0815, messaging on authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for Chinatown Child Care Services awarded by the Boston Planning and Development Agency to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund to support the creation and sustainability of family childcare and center-based programs.
Thank you. Docket number 0815 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0816 to 0818?
Docket number 0816, communication was received from Counselor Flynn regarding the Boston Police Crime Laboratory. Docket number 0817, notice was received from the mayor for absence from the city on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, at 11:45 a.m., returning the same day at 12:15 a.m. Docket number 0818, communication was received from GEI Consultants Incorporated regarding a release notification form and immediate response action plan.
Thank you. Dockets number 0816 to 0818 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0263?
Docket number 0263, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 31st, 2024. Docket number 0263, petition for a special law relative to an act regarding the disability pension for Brian McPherson, submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass in an amended draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. The committee held a hearing on April 18th, 2024. I was joined by counselors Louis Jean, Flynn, and Murphy. The committee heard testimony from the petitioner, Brian McPherson, who testified as to the incident that led to his injury, his efforts to recover and return to work, his eventual application for disability retirement benefits in 2009, which was approved retroactively in 2011, and the resulting financial impact, which has motivated him to seek the request increase described in docket 0263. While in the performance of his duties on May 13th, 2008, McPherson sustained serious injuries and testified that he was forced to retire at age 37. McPherson explained that he had a successful career in Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, holding various positions. However, in 2008, while responding to fights between inmates, he stated he was violently attacked and suffered permanent injuries. As a result, he was medically discharged and stated that medically, he was forced to retire as physicians advised him that the injuries he sustained were permanent. McPherson emphasized the financial impact this has had, as his capped salary has led to the loss of overtime pay and the inability to work part-time jobs. He also mentioned the strain on his children, who have witnessed his medical struggles and financial challenges the families continue to face. With regard to the request for an increase to 100% of his yearly annual pension allowance, the committee discussed potentially including language that allowed for flexibility in the percentage increase. The committee expressed support for landing on language that would ensure this home rule petition aligns with the goals of providing McPherson with a fair and adequate disability pension. And so I do recommend ought to pass an amended draft, and just the summary of the amendment is trying to be compliant with Mass General Law, specifically Chapter 32, subsection 5, 2(c), which limits the maximum pension payable to 80% rather than 100%, which was asked for, of the member's final salary, the average of three consecutive years of the member's highest annual salary. And so therefore, I recommend the following amendment in section 1d. Upon attaining the mandatory retirement age for Lieutenant Deputy Sheriff on the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, Brian McPherson shall receive a pension pursuant to section 7 of said chapter 32, a yearly amount of pension equal to, rather than 100%, saying 80% of the annual rate of compensation he was receiving on the day before he reaches the mandatory retirement age for Lieutenant Deputy Sheriff of the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. And so again, I'm recommending that this docket ought to pass in amended draft. I would love to turn it over to the lead sponsor if he has any remarks.
Thank you, Chair Coletta. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, first, I want to say thank you to the Chair of the Committee, Counselor Coletta, for conducting a very fair, open, transparent, informative hearing, where we heard testimony from Mr. McPherson, and in the impact this assault really had on him financially and his family, including significant medical-related issues.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
I support the recommendation made by Counselor Coletta, and just want to acknowledge and Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0263 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you.
thank her for having the hearing and for treating Mr. McPherson and his family with
Docket number 0263 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance to reflect that Counselor Fernandez Anderson is present? Thank you. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action.
respect. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0670 to 0678? Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I also want to thank the Chair for hosting this hearing.
Docket number 0670 through 0672, orders for the fiscal year 25 operating budget,
I learned that Brian McPherson's niece is actually a classmate of mine in this past weekend. She thanked us for holding this hearing.
including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and
So thank you again to Counselor Flynn. Thank you again, Chair Coletta, for hosting the hearing.
for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEC.
Chair Coletta, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, acceptance of the
Docket numbers 0673 through 0675, orders for capital grant fund credited appropriations.
committee report, and passage of docket number 0263. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
And docket numbers 0676 through 0678, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders
Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0263. and lease purchase agreements. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes.
The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell.
Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes.
Counselor Worrell, you now have the floor.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes.
As Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, we hosted six FY25 budget hearings and one
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jean.
Yes.
budget amendment working session this past week.
Counselor Louis Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
We held a hearing on May 2nd for the Boston Fire Department from the administration. Commissioner Burke, Robert J. Calabresi, Chief of Operations and Field Services, Rodney Marshall, Chief of Operations and Support Services, Kevin Coyne, Deputy Commission of Administration of Finance, and Michael Gaskin, Diversity Recruitment Officer, were present to testify for the hearing. Counselors Flynn, Fernandez Anderson, Peppin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Santana, Durkin, Coletta, Weber, and Counsel President Louis Jean were in attendance for this hearing. Discussions focused on enhancing diversity within the fire service, particularly through the cadet program designed to increase the representation of women and people of color. The high cost of overtime was discussed, as was the need for major improvements at four firehouses, as well as a new firehouse in District 9. On Thursday, May 2nd, we met to go over the budget for the Office of Human Services, Office of Workforce Development, and Youth Employment and Opportunity. From the administration, we had Ashley Montgomery, Chief of Staff, Office of Returning Citizens, Krista McSwain, Senior Advisor for Early Childhood and Director of the Office of Early Childhood, and Jose Maso, Chief of Human Services, were present to testify for this hearing. From the City Council, counselors Flynn, Fernandez Anderson, Murphy, Santana, Peppin, Weber, Durkin, and Counsel President Louis Jean were in attendance. During this session, the council reviewed the FY25 budget, emphasizing community support enhancement from childcare to housing for returned citizens with a focus on funding and community input and decisions. The sessions included converting formal schools into early learning centers and affordable housing, reducing childcare costs, and improvement support for returned citizens. On Friday, May 3rd, at 10:00 a.m., we held a working session to discuss the budget amendments. In attendance were Counselor Peppin, Counsel President Louis Jean, Counsel Coletta, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Weber, Braden, and Santana. Topics discussed included the process of proposing amendments to the Chair as part of an omnibus package, the needs to look at historically underspent programs or making cuts, how there's no rollover on fiscal funds from one year to next, and the council's ability to put the capital budget on a different timeline in the future. Additionally, the rules around rejecting or approving the BPS budget were discussed with a desire to get more answers from the RFIs and more information on the central office before any action is taken by the council. On Monday, May 6th, at 10:00 a.m., we held a hearing to go over the budget for Consumer Affairs and Licensing, Tourism, Sports, and Entertainment, and related revolving funds focusing on several key areas. The panel included John Boarder IV, Director of Tourism, Sports, and Entertainment, Danny Green, Board Manager of Consumer Affairs and Licensing, Shigun Idewu, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, and Donald Wright, Deputy Chief of Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. In attendance from the Boston City Council were Counselors Coletta, Mejia, Weber, Fernandez Anderson, Peppin, Counsel President Louis Jean, Counsel Flynn, Fitzgerald, Durkin, and Santana. We discussed supporting minority-owned cannabis businesses, streamlining licensing processes and improvement consumer affairs operations. Overall, the hearing highlighted efforts to enhance equity, streamline city operations, and involve the community in economic and public safety initiatives. On Monday, May 6th, at 2:00 p.m., we held a hearing to go over the budget for the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Supply Diversity, and Labor Compliance and Worker Protections. Testifying for the hearing were Shigun Idewu, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Donald Wright, Deputy Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Trin Eugen, Chief of Work Empowerment, Andre Lima, Director of Supply Diversity, Jordy Sugarman-Brazin, Deputy Chief of Work Empowerment, Christopher Brown, Senior Program Manager for Living Wage and Wage Staff, and Monique Mitchell, BRJP Manager. In attendance from the City Council were Counselors Flynn, Mejia, Braden, Weber, Fitzgerald, Counsel President Louis Jean, Peppin, Santana, and we received a letter of absence from Counsel Fernandez Anderson. This hearing focused on procurement strategy enhancements, introducing minority- and woman-led firms to city-side development projects, and supporting small businesses in development areas. Discussions also included plans to expand cultural districts and to provide support for small businesses affected by vandalism. On Tuesday, May 7th, at 10:00 a.m., we held a hearing to go over the FY25 budget for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, Boston Public Library, and related revolving funds. The panel included David Leonard, President of Boston Public Library, Emily Trazak, CFO of Boston Public Library, Michael Colford, Director of Library Services, Martha Rivera, Commission of BCYF, and Eddie Maguire, Director of Operations for BCYF. Boston City Councilors in attendance were Flynn, Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Murphy, Peppin, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Coletta, and Counsel President Louis Jean, and Counsel Santana. Key topics discussed were Boston Public Library's initiatives in digital literacy, cultural heritage, and community support with particular attention to unhoused patrons and non-English speakers. BCYF's enhancements in youth and family services focused on expanding recreational and pragmatic offerings for seniors, youth, and improvement facilities citywide was also discussed in detail. Other issues included technology upgrades at the North End Library, diversity and staffing, and the importance of maintaining community-oriented services like childcare and public access programming. Yesterday at 2:00 p.m., we held a hearing to go over the FY25 budget for the Planning Department. Present from the administration were Arthur Jamison, Chief of Planning and Director of BPDA, Devin Cork, Deputy Chief of Transformation and Development, and Tim Mathis, Director of Finance. Council members in attendance included Coletta, Santana, Fitzgerald, Peppin, Durkin, Braden, Counsel President Louis Jean, Fernandez Anderson, Weber, and Flynn. The hearing focused on the planning department's mission to enhance climate resiliency, affordability, equity through thoughtful urban design and exclusive planning strategies. Discussions covered restructuring efforts to prioritize urban planning, comprehensive zoning reforms to establish a citywide design vision, modernization and streamlined development review parts with highlights to improve transparency. The department's initiatives to boost coastal resilience and integrate public feedback were also discussed, aiming for inclusive growth that benefits all residents. The hearing addressed the impact complex zoning laws on housing development, particularly in Mattapan, and efforts to engage local communities and businesses. Other key points included concerns about displacement and the effective management of development funds, with the council exploring how to align zoning and development with community needs, sustainable growth, and protection of residents. Each hearing has provided important insight in improving city governance. I thank all counselors for the collaboration in the budget process. Also want to give a big shout-out to central staff, Shane, Karishma, for all their hard work, and just looking forward to continuing these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell, and thank you again for your continued stewardship. I think just even that summary shows how much work goes into shepherding us through the budget process, and really grateful for your leadership. Mr. Clerk, can you please update the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Aaron Murphy has now joined us? Thank you. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, if we could please take docket number 08... Oh, okay. Dockets, in addition to continuing to steward us, Counselor Worrell will continue to steward us, and dockets number 0670 to 0678 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, we are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. We will please take docket number 0825 out of order so that Counselor Fernandez Anderson can come up here and make a presentation for Gays for Good alongside State Representative John Moran. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you now have the floor.
Want me to read it?
Yes. Mr. Clerk, can you please read it into the record?
Docket number 0825, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following. Resolution recognizing gay for good.
Good morning, or good afternoon. My name is Tanya Fernandez Anderson, and thank you, Madam President. I am pleased to stand here with Representative John Moran, also a constituent in District 7, and members of Gay for Good Boston. I'd like to invite you to come over to receive this resolution, or citation, rather. Bob? No, you just take it. Please, Jordan.
Hi.
Hi.
Of course.
Thank you. Okay. For those of you who don't know, Gay for Good mobilizes LGBTQ+ and ally volunteers to promote diversity, foster inclusion, and strengthen ties to the broader community nationwide. They have volunteered with nearly 800 nonprofits and contributed over $3 million worth of volunteer hours. Locally, their volunteers can be found supporting organizations like the Greater Boston Food Bank, Bikes Not Bombs, Bagley, Fenway Health, Trans Resistance, and Theater Offensive. Sorry, of course, that's my favorite. Gay for Good's mission is creating a pipeline for volunteer opportunities reflects the spirit of community service that makes Boston's LGBTQ+ community so special. I've mentioned before that I was raised by a gay man proudly, and I learned a lot from him directly about what it means to give back to your community, to be patriarch of your family, to give unconditionally your heart, your sweat, your tears, and your passion. It was with him in mind that I helped create theatrical productions, fashion shows, and other community gatherings that celebrate the vibrancy, beauty, and creativity of the LGBTQ+ community, bringing and highlighting women of all influence to the stage. That is also why, as counselor, I have been determined to advocate for LGBTQ+ community, particularly uplifting Black, trans men and women who live at the intersections of our society's deeply inadequate systems. I hope that by passing this resolution today, we take a moment to reflect on the hard work being done every day by organizations like Gay for Good, but also to remind ourselves how often we have to rely on the time and effort of volunteers just to make our systems function. I want to take a moment to step back and let Representative Moran speak, and before giving a moment for folks from Gay for Good to offer brief remarks, should they choose so. Rep Moran?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Madam President, and my esteemed colleagues here at City Hall and counselors. I just want to also just echo the words of Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. The work that Gay for Good does is really important, and I started thinking about this this morning a little bit, and in some ways, I'm wondering, it's a little emotional, I'm wondering if I'd actually be here, standing as your state representative for the 9th Suffolk District, if Gay for Good hadn't for decades gone out, and yes, they've raked leaves and gone to Theater Offensive and done all that important work, but more importantly, they've certainly shared their stories. And by sharing those stories, there's become both in the city of Boston and the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, over the last couple decades, more of an understanding. And building those bridges of diversity and inclusion is a key part of what Gay for Good does, along with the great work that they do. So I just really want to congratulate all of you for all the hard work you do. And we have some resolutions, but do you want me to present my resolution first?
Well, does anyone... Who's the spokesperson?
Oh, yeah. Let's do that.
Carrie's gonna be elected for us.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Boston chapter of Gay for Good, we are truly humbled and so honored for this recognition by the city of Boston. Our mission is to do good and open things up for everyone, and just in a small way, this may help more people to get to know who we are and what we do, and encourage them to join us. So thank you again. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Rep?
Great. And so on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I want to present for Gay for Good, for your dedication to the community with your selfless service, and the profound positive impact you've had on the LGBTQ+ community, the city of Boston, and the Commonwealth. The entire membership of the House of Representatives extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for the future, for good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. Signed, House Speaker Ronald Mariano, and myself, John Moran, State Representative for the 9th Suffolk District. So thank you very, very much for all you do. Congratulations.
Would any of my colleagues like to speak on this matter?
Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk? Okay, you'll add. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Counselor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules for passage and adoption of docket number 0825. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this resolution has been adopted. If my colleagues can come up for a photo?
Thank you.
Yes.
If you want.
So Counselor Fernandez Anderson presents an official resolution from the Boston City Council.
Are you guys listening?
Thank you.
Yes. Official resolution offered by Boston City Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Be it resolved that the Good, for your dedication to the community with your selfless service, and the profound positive impact you've had on the LGBTQ+ community, the city of Boston, and the Commonwealth, the entire membership of the House of Representatives extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for the future, for good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. Signed, House Speaker Ronald Mariano and myself, John Moran, State Representative for the 9th Suffolk District. So thank you very, very much for all you do. Congratulations.
Would any of my colleagues like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk? Okay, you'll add. Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrall. Please add the chair. Councilor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules for passage and adoption of docket number 0825. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This resolution has been adopted. If my colleagues can come up for a photo?
Thank you.
Yes.
If you want.
So, Councilor Fernandez Anderson presents an official resolution from the Boston City Council.
Are you guys listening?
Yes. Official resolution offered by Boston City Councilor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Gay for Good in recognition of your tireless efforts and unwavering dedication towards promoting diversity, inclusion, and community engagement, for their collaboration with local organizations and nonprofits in Boston to address pressing social and environmental issues, and for your significant positive impact on the LGBTQ+ community and the entire city of Boston, inspiring individuals to come together in service of a more inclusive and equitable society. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council, all of us, extend our best wishes for continued success. That this resolution be duly signed by the President of the Boston City Council and attested to in a copy they wrote, transmitted by the Clerk of the City of Boston. Gay for Good, thanks for all the good you do.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out to Bob Barney. I love you.
Does he want to come in the photo?
On record.
Okay, on record. Can we take a picture?
I don't want to block you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Except me. Yeah, they all...
Gay for Good also left a flyer with us about volunteering with them in the city of Boston. There's a very active Instagram page, so if you want to learn more about volunteering with Gay for Good, check out the Instagram page, and I'm sure they're happy to talk to all of you. So thank you again. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0819?
Docket number 0819, Councilor Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss expanding the urban tree canopy in District 2.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this is a hearing to discuss strategies for expanding the urban tree canopy in District 2 and throughout the city. District 2, as many people know, includes some of the areas with the least tree coverage, such as South Boston, Chinatown, downtown Boston. We all know that having a healthy urban tree canopy is important to our environment. Trees not only provide beautification, but they also provide filters for pollutants, absorb excess stormwater runoff, provide shades during hot summers, and other environmental and public health benefits. I would also acknowledge that trees are critically important to our quality of life, our well-being, and mental health. It does not matter what neighborhood or political background someone has when trees come down due to a bad storm, when they're cut down on private property or by a developer. Elected officials hear about it. Residents are not happy. The city released its Urban Forest Plan in September 2022, which lays out strategies for the preservation, expansion of our urban canopy. The city council passed a Tree Protection Ordinance late in 2023, which regulates the process of tree removals, trimming, and maintenance. Of note, the Urban Forest Plan finds that neighborhoods in the south and west parts of the city have more trees, while neighborhoods in the north and east parts of the city, such as South Boston, have the least tree coverage. As of 2019, South Boston only had 8% tree coverage, and a consensus track in Chinatown only had 7%, while the city average was 27%. This has a significant impact when it comes to hot days in the summertime, climate change, heat island effect, with a serious low lack of tree coverage in the neighborhoods throughout District 2. My office and I recently held a meeting with Councilor Murphy, Lydia Polaski from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and neighbors from the Friends of North the Broadway Civic Group on this issue after both ever-source cut-down trees that will eventually be replaced for a security fence upgrade. The South Boston elected officials and I continue to work closely with Mayor Wu and Commissioner Ryan Woods from the Parks Department in our attempts to preserve Sister Mary Veronica Park and the five mature trees on that particular site on the corner of F3 and West 8th Street in South Boston. I know the area very well. I live several blocks away, but there are a lot of elderly people, persons with disabilities, that particularly rely on that park for places so that they can meet. Residents across District 2 and Chinatown, downtown Boston, and the south end also continue to advocate for more tree planting in the neighborhoods. Increasing our urban tree canopy should be a priority for our continued efforts to combat heat island effect, especially with such low coverage in District 2. I look forward to this hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrall. Please add the chair. Thank you. Docket number 0819 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0820?
Docket number 0820, Councilor Weber offered the following: Resolution in support of Senate 1165, an act to protect injured workers.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The workers' compensation system is supposed to represent a compromise where workers give up, when they're injured in the workplace, they give up the ability to sue their employer for a tort, like you would during a car accident.
Bless you.
Bless you, Councilor Durkin. And in exchange for giving up that ability, they're supposed to be guaranteed some income, some compensation for injuries that they suffer in the workplace through the workers' comp system in a way that they are given those benefits in a very quick manner to address the injury, and that there's not supposed to be an opposition to it by the employer because they've given up their right to sue them in tort. In reality, what happens is a very long, drawn-out process where workers file for claims, and they're often face an uphill battle to even get the benefits that are supposedly guaranteed by the system, and they also face retaliation just for filing these claims. So what happens as a result is only about 40% of workers who have an injury that's supposed to be covered by the workers' compensation system actually file for their claims. And even the ones that do face harsh retaliation without the benefit of an attorney, because most attorneys will not take a workers' comp retaliation case, they're difficult to prove, and the worker isn't working, so it's hard to even pay for an attorney. That's why I brought this resolution in support of a bill. It's called an Act to Protect Injured Workers, which was filed by Senator Jamie Eldridge. And what this act will do is it'll allow the Attorney General's Office to enforce complaints of misconduct and retaliation in relation to workers' comp claims. So, you know, I think this will address, you know, a major problem with the system. We know that the issue of denying workers' compensation is pervasive across Boston and throughout the Commonwealth. That's why I'm asking that we suspend the rules and adopt this resolution and support a Senate Bill 1165, an act to protect injured workers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Weber. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Worrall. Please add the chair. Councilor Weber seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0820. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0820. Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta?
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin?
Yes.
Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn?
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louie Jen?
Yes.
Councilor Louie Jen, yes. Councilor Mejia? Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor Peppin?
Yes.
Councilor Peppin, yes. Councilor Santana?
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber?
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Worrall?
Yes.
Councilor Worrall, yes. Docket number 0820 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0820 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0821?
Docket number 0821, Councilors Weber and Louie Jen offer the following: Resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I do not think I could summarize the Jewish American experience in a short speech here on the floor, but, you know, knowing that I'm about to fail has never stopped me before, so I'll do my best. Okay, on October 18, 1790, George Washington visited the Torah synagogue in Newport, Rhode Island, and delivered a letter to the congregation that promised more than just mere religious tolerance. The letter stated, "It is now no more than toler... It is now no more that toleration is spoken of, as if it were the indulgence of one class of people that another enjoy the exercise of their inherent natural rights." And the idea that Jews could be part of the American fabric in 1790, while not always embraced, in fact, Jews were not granted full citizenship in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts until 1821, shows that this country has been, shows why this country has been the home of so many Jews, and why many of those Jews have deep roots in Boston. It is not hard to find the positive impacts Jews have had on our society. From philosophy to physics, from literature to the law, there have been Jewish Americans often leading the way toward progress. Louis Brandeis, first practiced law in Boston, went on to become the people's lawyer and the first Jewish Supreme Court Justice. If you like music, look no further than Boston Latin School alum Leonard Bernstein. If you like movies, Jews helped pioneer that industry. If you like Star Trek, Boston's native son and West End resident Leonard Nimoy brought the hand gesture of his rabbi, which was also used in my synagogue, to pray for his misbegotten human colleagues to live long and prosper. If you like stand-up comedy, sketch comedy, improv comedy, vaudeville, satire, the spoof, you can thank Jewish Americans. In sports, we produced Sandy Koufax, Kevin Euclid, Julian Edelman, and I'm sure there's one or two more. You know, two famous Jewish athletes include Sam Stoller and Marty Glickman. They were both on the U.S. 4x100-meter relay team in the 1936 Olympics and were kept from competing in the Olympic final supposedly as a, to not offend the head of those games, Adolf Hitler. But you know it's bad when maybe the two most famous Jewish athletes are famous for not being allowed to compete. Jewish Americans have always had also, have also had a strong commitment to civil rights. It's no coincidence that when James Chaney, who was Black, was murdered in Philadelphia in Mississippi in June 1964 for trying to register people to vote, he was with two Jews from New York, Andrew Goodman and Michael Schwerner, who were also murdered. This council has also benefited from the service of two Jewish Americans recently, in Mike Ross and Josh Sakum. But what does it mean to be a Jewish American today? My answer is, how should I know? If you think that, you know, I think you can see that Jews have been deeply affected by the attack on October 7, and its terrible aftermath. In great numbers, Jews have demonstrated for Israel in the return of hostages. Many have also joined encampments and marches in protest, calling for an immediate ceasefire, and calls for an end to the occupation by the Israeli government. What I believe was in the Passover prayer I read here last week, that we must do our best to hold in our hearts the suffering of Jews and Palestinians, both in Israel, Gaza, the West Bank, and in Boston. But that includes a right to recognize the pain of Jews who watched the attack by Hamas on October 7 in horror. President Biden, in a speech yesterday, talked about seeing American Jews fear. I, for one, have no doubt that the attack by Hamas on October 7 has brought about a rise in antisemitism. That is not to say that criticisms of the Israeli government are per se antisemitic, because they are not. We know that antisemitism, for thousands of years, is always hovering right under the surface, whether we were talking about the Spanish Inquisition, the Holocaust, or more recently Charlottesville with groups marching and chanting "Jews Will Not Replace Us," neo-Nazi groups demonstrating right here in Boston, or people today suggesting that the victims of October 7 deserve to be killed. We have to be vigilant. We voted for a ceasefire, return of all the hostages, and resumption of humanitarian aid last week because this body is able to hold in its heart the suffering of all the innocent people who are being killed in the Middle East. This is another opportunity to recognize that pain and do what we can for the people of Boston by not only calling for peace, but calling out hate. So I hope you'll support me in this resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Weber. I thank you for adding me as a co-sponsor. There's no way that I can, oh, yes, okay. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber.
I apologize. I would like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Durkin as a third.
Counselor Weber seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Durkin as an original third co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Durkin is so added. Counselor Weber, I'd like to just thank you for adding me. There is no way that whatever I can say holds more weight than what you experience and who you are and how you come to the table as a Jewish American, and the joy and the first that you have, and the fears that you have as well, and the rise of antisemitism and denouncing that. So I just thank you. I thank you for adding me. I'm grateful for the many contributions of our Jewish residents in the city of Boston, and for myself, as my first real introduction was when I turned in my dorm form late freshman year at Columbia and was on the Jewish Orthodox floor. And I learned a lot, and from there, when I studied abroad in Senegal, traveling with Jewish friends who are conservative, observe conservative, conservative tradition, and on Shabbat on Friday nights until sundown on Saturday, having to not use electricity, traveling through Senegal and Mali, and learning so much more about the depth of Jewish culture and identity. And then as a law school student at Harvard Law School, starting the Freedom Seder as an executive member of the Black Law Students Association, in partnership with the Jewish Law Students Association, come together to commemorate the first Freedom Seder that happened the year after MLK died in 1969, to talk about our shared stories of struggle, of enslavement, of liberation, and of oppression, and also identifying our own blind spots. And in so doing, inviting other affinity groups, inviting Seventh Day Adventists, inviting the Asian Law Students Association, inviting La Alianza, inviting Muslim Law Students Association, inviting everyone to share our stories of oppression and of continued struggle. And so I thank you for bringing this resolution to the table. I thank you for sharing your lived experience, and I thank you for all you do in this city. And it is important that we guard against and denounce rising antisemitism, as we do in this resolution. And oftentimes, it's the same groups that are committing antisemitic attacks, that are also engaged in anti-immigrant behavior, that are engaged in anti-Black behavior, that are engaged in racism. And so it's important that we call that out. And so I thank you for introducing this resolution, and I will also ask my colleagues to vote in favor. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counselor Weber, and thank you so much, Council President Louie Jen. Today and this month is about celebrating the Jewish community, but it's hard to acknowledge that fully without understanding that two days ago on May 6 was Holocaust Remembrance Day to commemorate the victims of the Holocaust and commit to ensuring the safety of the Jewish community. 214 days ago on October 7 marked the deadliest day for the Jewish people since the Holocaust. Followers of the Jewish faith can point to persecution in every millennia. Followers of the Jewish faith can similarly point to resilience in every millennia. I'm not an observer of the Jewish faith tradition, so I recognize the ways in which my understanding of their concepts of faith may, and my understanding may be simplistic, but the concept in Judaism of Tikun Olom, the imperative to repair the world, kept coming into my mind, and I was always thinking about how I could celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month. To me, this is an imperative to care for all, but particularly the most vulnerable. At this complicated moment, I think it's important, all more important to uplift simple understandings, that it's not complicated to stand up for the persecuted, it's not complicated to stand up for the vulnerable, and it's not complicated to recognize that members of the Jewish community who have heralded these calls throughout history. Jewish people have shaped... always thinking about how I could celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month. To me, this is an imperative to care for all, but particularly the most vulnerable. At this complicated moment, I think it's important-- all more important to uplift simple understandings, that it's not complicated to stand up for the persecuted, it's not complicated to stand up for the vulnerable, and it's not complicated to recognize that members of the Jewish community who have heralded these calls throughout history. Jewish people have shaped the history of District 8, and I can point to cultural institutions like Temple Israel, the Vilnius Shul, and the Boston synagogue of-- as powerful reminders of that. And I thank my-- would thank my colleagues for joining me in voting in support of celebrating Jewish Americans in our-- in our city today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to also put another name on the list as we remember Jewish Heritage Month. In Alston Brighton, we had a resident in our neighborhood, Jeanne Leitman Baron. She lived from 1891 to 1969. She was the first woman to serve full-time as a full-time Massachusetts-- judge in the Massachusetts Municipal Court, and she later became the first woman Associate Justice appointed to the Massachusetts Superior Court. She was one of four daughters born to Russian Jewish immigrant parents who lived in the West End of Boston. And beginning of her remarkable career, she-- she traced her-- she graduated from Boston Girls High at the age of 15 as a valedictorian of her class, and went on to very great things. She, as a lawyer, and is very interested in women's suffrage and women's rights, after the passage of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote, women were able to serve on juries in 21 states, but not in Massachusetts. In 1924, Jeanne wrote a pamphlet Jury Service for Women, published by the National League of Women Voters in Massachusetts-- in Washington, D.C. She quipped, "How would a man like to be judged by a jury of all women? Is it fair to the women victim who has suffered at the hands of some man to have her case tried by a jury composed only of men?" She also was the first woman-- a mother-- she was the first mother elected to the Boston School Committee, and she just had an incredible career dedicated to justice and freedom. And in Independence Day in 1960, at the invitation of Mayor Collins, she became the third woman in 184 years to address the public at Boston's annual event at Faneuil Hall, speaking about what the day meant to her as a first generation in her family, born in the United States. Her words are still relevant to us today, more than a hun-- so much later in time. "Do you understand, then, why today commemorating the birthday of freedom, I am deeply touched? We learn that in America, it made no difference where your cradle or your mother's cradle was wrought, in Russia, Italy, Ireland, Portugal, or on the Mayflower. In order to safeguard the heritage of freedom, we must always remember that our government is a government of laws and not men." And we have a Women's History Trail in Alston Brighton. If you go check out the Herit-- the Alston Brighton Heritage Museum, you can follow the trail and visit the former home of Judge Jeanne Leitman Baron, an incredible woman.
Thank you, Counsel Braden, for sharing that incredible history. Also, yeah, shout out Hodin during Ramadan. I want to shout out my staffer, Jesse Purvis, during Jewish American Heritage Month and his family. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernanda Anderson. Counsel Fernanda Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Lee sponsors and co-sponsors for introducing this resolution. Counselor Weber, I rise in full support, I-- which I look forward to voting in favor of. One thing that I think is so special about your resolution is that it uplifts the spirit of advocacy and solidarity that is alive and well today in the Jewish community. When protests broke out, for example, in 2017 in response to President Trump's proposed Muslim ban, it was the Jewish community leaders, rabbis, and passionate Jewish people across the city who joined hands with their Muslim brothers and sisters and to stand up for their civil rights. And as the resolution notes, our Jewish brothers and sisters have been on the front lines advocating for civil rights, workers' rights, women's rights, racial equality, LGBTQ+ rights, and anti-war protests. The "Simple Facts of Human Kindness Extended to Others" is called Mizvah in Hebrew, and is an integral part of Jew-- of the Jewish faith. In Islam, we call that Sadaka. And as a counselor, I make it a habit to attend religious services throughout my district on the weekends. And so, as you guys know, a few weeks ago, we have a tradition in the Kaverton community where the Jewish and Kaverton community get together, and so if you have lineage or bloodline of Jewish heritage, I've mentioned several times that my grandmother is from Rosenkot, from Polish-- Polish-- she's half Polish, so we go to the Jewish Seder, and we eat together and go through both traditions, Kaverton and Jewish Seder. And there, I observed this rabbi speak on justice. I could have sworn it was some sort of like spiritual, like Shakespeare. It had me in tears. He spoke of dignity, care for others, and the things that bring us together as people. And I think naturally, people are good. I think when we don't know any better, then we make mistakes, or we do wrong, but naturally, I think people mean well, and people want to come together in love and passion and compassion. It was deeply inspiring experience, and I hope that-- I would hope to invite that rabbi-- the rabbi here before the council. I won't spoil it and give you away the name, one day, and share his wisdom with you. I am grateful for you to sponsor, and I am humbled to stand here in support of you, my Jewish brother, and again, will vote in favor to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernanda Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as we recognize and celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month, I also think it's critically important that we recognize and emphasize the alarming rise of antisemitism that is taking place here in Massachusetts and across the country. Antisemitism, often referred to as the world's oldest form of hate, has existed for centuries and continues to this day as a system of marginalizing and oppression people, Jewish people, across the city, across this country, based on stereotypes, myths, conspiracy theories, disinformation about the Jewish people. We have seen a disturbing rise in antisemitism, neo-Nazism, white nationalism, and hate crimes in Boston and across the country for the past several years, but especially after the horrific terrorist attack by Hamas on October 7th. According to the most recent report from the Anti-Defamation League, New England saw a dramatic increase in antisemitic incidents after the October 7th attack, with 623 reported incidents of assault, harassment, vandalism, which represents a 200% increase. Prior to the October 7th attack, I have sounded the alarm for several years on the brazenly open acts of antisemitism and neo-Nazi activities in our city, state, and country. Neo-Nazi groups like NS7 and the Patriot Front have become emboldened in their activities and have increased their activities here in Boston, throughout New England, with engaging hateful propaganda, aggressive demonstrations, even physical intimidations, like we saw in downtown Boston on July 4th, a few years ago, marching through the streets of Boston through an Asian community, through a community with a large LGBTQ community as well. We also have seen several years ago a horrific, violent stabbing of a rabbi in Alston Brighton. Just yesterday, President Biden delivered a keynote speech at the Holocaust Memorial Annual Day of Remembrance. He noted that there is a surge of antisemitism in the United States, and that we have to stand up to attacks on our Jewish neighbors. Now more than ever, it is critical that we continue to always stand with our Jewish neighbors in the city in order to stop the rise of antisemitism, all forms of hate that we witness in our country. We also must continue to recognize the contributions of the Jewish community, support them, and show-- show up for them. I would also like to note that I had filed a separate resolution on Friday specifically aimed at denouncing acts of antisemitism for this body to review. I understand that it will not be-- that it will not be part of the official resolution. I want to say that I appreciate the author's resolution on Jewish American History Month and his leadership, and to honor the contributions of the Jewish people here in Boston and across the country. I believe the rise of antisemitism that we are seeing locally, nationally, internationally is separate and distinct, and it has an impact on what we're doing here today, but it should also be its own discussion, in my opinion. In my opinion, what our Jewish neighbors are experiencing in our communities and on campuses deserves its own conversation as well, and that's why I filed a separate resolution. Again, my resolution specifically addresses the rise of antisemitism, and how we should stand up and condemn any acts of antisemitism. I believe that that topic is different and distinct from this-- this resolution. Obviously, I support it. I understand that my resolution will be withdrawn, unfortunately, but I would like to go on record to state that I believe my resolution denouncing antisemitism should be on the agenda for a vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Luizian. I rise to thank the makers for bringing this resolution forward, and please add my name. My district-- this may come as a surprise to some folks, but my district has a long history of welcoming Eastern Europeans, including those with the Jewish affiliation. Eastie is home to Temple Ohibe-- Ohibe-- I apologize if I said that wrong, Temple Ohibe Shalom Cemetery, a historic cemetery, and the first in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm proud to represent individuals who identify with the Jewish faith and stand with them against increasing and deplorable acts of antisemitism. And my understanding is that this resolution also has the word antisemitism in there and discusses it. And just last week, I spoke on the floor where I denounced acts of antisemitism in the strongest of terms, and I've had the privilege of meeting with various affinity groups and come to fully understand how integral the Jewish community has been to our local and national conversation, dialogue, and movements. As counselor-- my counsel colleague from District 7 has mentioned, they've been at the forefront and allies in the fight for racial, social, and economic justice, immigrant justice, and recently found out that some of them-- not everybody, because we know no particular group is a monolith, but some of them have been strong allies in the fight for bodily autonomy and reproductive freedom. And so in these conversations, I promise to stand with them, and I'm doing so, again, here today, to stand with the Jewish community and denouncing acts of antisemitism that occur not just in my district, but in the city and nationally as well. And so again, just thank you so much for highlighting this resolution and bringing this forward, and want to thank my counsel colleague from District 2 for his filing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just-- I want to thank Madam President and Counsel Durkin for co-sponsoring, and I want to thank all my colleagues who've spoken so eloquently about this-- about this resolution, and I think this is obviously something that, you know, I don't think any of us, you know, were elected to deal with on a daily basis, but it's something that we have to confront, and the events going on in the world and around here, you know, in our city. And, you know, I thank you for handling this in a way that shows that we can come together and, you know, we can express empathy for our constituents and show a way forward that, you know, hopefully brings a resolution to what's happening in the world right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fernanda Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Counselors Weber, Luizian, and Durkin, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0821. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0821. Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Luizian.
Yes.
Counsel Luizian, yes. Counsel Mihia. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0821 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0821 has been adopted. Docket number 0822 pursuant to the clerk pursuant to Rule 15 has been withdrawn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to be respectful to you and to the body. I'd like to go on record and state once again that I think my hearing resolution is distinct and different from Counselor Weber's resolution. Mine focuses on the antisemitism that's prevalent throughout the city, throughout the country. I think we should also vote on that specifically. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Based on Rule 15 of the City Council Rules, in the event an ordinance, order, resolution, petition, amendment, authorization, agreement, or motion concerning the same and similar subjects filed with the clerk for consideration by the council, the clerk, with consultation with the council president, shall cause to amend it on the agenda only the resolution or which was first filed. In this case, Counsel Weber's resolution was first filed. And having reviewed both resolutions, they seem to have a distinct common theme, and some of the wording on the resolutions are exactly the same. So based on those two observations, we use Rule 15 for this situation.
Thank you. Counsel Flynn, is there something you'd like to add? You may.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of the wording in my document is based on the experience I've had over the last seven years of documenting and writing and being engaged in the harassment that white supremacists have taken against many people across this city, including in my district. The wording that I have had in my resolution focuses on white supremacy, because I've focused on that issue for a long period of time, interacting with the City of Boston Human Rights Commission, documenting every incident of hate or hate crimes that have taken place in this city. And I take those issues very seriously, like my colleagues do. That's why I think this issue of antisemitism and hate crimes is distinct from celebrating the enormous contributions and sacrifices of the Jewish community. I understand you're not-- you're going to go forward without my resolution, but I just wanted to go on record as saying I disagree.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn.
Respectfully disagree.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. There is-- all a lot-- Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just-- I would like to say, I did find the wording of the resolutions very similar. The resolution I filed also calls for, you know, for us to call out antisemitism and included recent events here in Boston. I do think, you know, they sought to-- and I think Counsel Flynn's resolution mentions Jewish American Heritage Month, you know, sort of a reason why to bring this up now. So I think, just by some happenstance, I filed before Counsel Flynn, or my office did, and, you know, I think mine would have been Rule 15 if it had been filed after. Thank you.
Thank you. That's actually a good point. It probably would have been. The clerk also has a side-by-side showing both resolutions, that both start off talking about Jewish American Heritage Month, and both announce antisemitism. So thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please read docket number 0823?
Docket number 0823. Counselors Fernandez Anderson and Mihia offer the following: Resolution recognizing May 12th as Mother's Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernanda Anderson. Counsel Fernanda Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules-- well, in this case, I'd like to add Counsel Murphy as the original co-sponsor, since Counsel-- the original co-sponsor, since Counsel Mejia is not here.
So, pursuant to the, Counselor Mejia can stay on, if you would like, and I can add Counsel Murphy as a third original co-sponsor barring any objections.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, to suspension of the rules, to add Counsel Murphy as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Murphy is so added. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. With Mother's Day coming up this Sunday, I wanted all of us to take a moment to celebrate the mothers in our lives who have nurtured us, encouraged us, championed us, and who have helped us become the people we are today. I'm proud to be sponsoring this resolution alongside my two mothers on the council who demonstrate in their own ways the immense strength and courage it takes to be a mom. Counsel Mejia is a single mom raising an amazing daughter to be as caring and outspoken as she is, a athlete and a student. I, and I think that Counsel Murphy shows that the job of being a mother doesn't end when your kids turn 18, in the relentless spirit that she has shown in her journey as a mother. I always enjoy hearing about her children's various professional and personal aspirations in her hearings and council speeches. I, myself, have been a foster mom to 17 children, and I'm proud and continue to uplift the work that foster parents across the city put in every day to create loving home environment for their found families. And I'd be remiss if I didn't speak about how proud I am to be a mother of two very amazing, wonderful, fabulous, perfect, no, I'm kidding, sons. Motherhood means different things to different people, and in that spirit, I also want to hold space for expecting mothers, the mothers in our lives that are not related by blood, mothers who may not have been, who have not been able to conceive, and acknowledge the mothers in our lives that we have sadly lost, and mothers of all influence, people of all backgrounds that see themselves as mothers, not necessarily just women. To this day, so this day, and this resolution is for them as well. I want to give an opportunity for my co-sponsors to speak, and I just wanted to wrap up with this, that it's just, being, being a mother transforms your life, your, your, your life, and it's something that is evolutionary. You are one person, and you think you know a thing, and you think you understand what love is or what life is, and when you learn, when you look at your child's face for the very first time, when you go through that, whether adopted or conceived, you learn to love all over again for the very first time. And just the act of having a baby in your womb, you are already protective and nurturing, and you're watching out for the bumps so that you don't bump your stomach into something. You're already thinking about what you eat, you are thinking about how you speak, or the energy, or the people around you, and there you become a natural nurturer. And then, when you conceive, it's just an amazing thing, that I think that no words can explain the experience or the magnitude of the strength that it takes. So, to all the mothers, to every Black woman in Roxbury that protected me and has loved me and has carried me through my life, to my own mother, my grandmother, my grandmothers, and to your mothers, I wish you a very happy Mother's Day. Thank you. And I'm looking for a suspended pass.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. I agree with you. Your two sons are pretty exemplary. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for adding me, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Moms are our first cheerleaders who shower us with unconditional love. Mine is strong and fiercely loyal, and I'm also fortunate to have aunts who I definitely consider second mothers to me. I was just visiting my Auntie Kate earlier today, as she works hard to get home soon, hopefully. So, I'm also the mother of four amazing children, definitely has been a complete honor and the proudest job I've had for the last 35 years. And Counselor Fernandez Anderson and Mejia and I are the mothers on the council, and seven children among us, and I would say also many more. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you mentioned the foster children you raised and cared for. I definitely thought of my students, so I had hundreds of children as a teacher, that definitely were like children to me. So, any chance, I believe, we have to uplift our mothers, so today we should. It's important that we do, so I do want to wish all the mothers out there Happy Mother's Day. Also, to the five dads here on the council, you have amazing wives, partners who are raising amazing children, and I just want to shout out that we have 17 children here on the council that I know look up to us as mothers, but you as dads also, who are doing wonderful things. So, Happy Mother's Day, and sometimes, for many, it's a sad day. So, if you're missing your mom, or an aunt, or grandma, I just want to send love. These holidays are hard for many, families are difficult, they're challenging, and just sending love to all the moms out there, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Happy Mother's Day, Counsel Murphy. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to shed some light for, on my, and say thank you to my own mom and the mother of my children, who have obviously been guiding lights for me, and I wouldn't be who I am today. This is also going to keep me out of the doghouse, and a reminder to folks that this, for the dads and the sons out there, it, Mother's Day is this weekend. So, if you, I, I, I know you're like me, and you haven't yet. Get, get on it. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the creators of this resolution, and also just make sure that I say Happy Mother's Day to my, to my beautiful wife, mother of two beautiful kids. She's a superhero. All moms are superheroes. My mom's a superhero, and I just want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the beautiful moms of District Five as well. My, my district has so many amazing families that always show up, and those moms are there every single day. So, shout out to you all as well. Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the reminder, Counsel Fitzgerald. Appreciate that. Happy Mother's Day to the, all the moms in the City of Boston, to the mothers on this council. Also, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers, figures in my life, the church moms. They taught me the power of prayer, the power of faith. My aunts, they has always been there for me, you know, when my parents were working two to three jobs, making sure I got to school, had something to eat. My sister, who's somebody who I've always looked up to, even when I was younger, and even as a parent now, she's an shining example of a parent. My mother, who is my biggest cheerleader, as some of you guys saw in the first inauguration and the second, but my mother also has sacrificed so much for, for, for her children, and also has given me the greatest gift, in always believing in me, you know, no matter the situation, or, you know, where I was at in life. And also, too, my, the mother of my child, my partner, Chelsea, who is a young, amazing mom, this is her second Mother's Day, and the amount of love and care that she pours it, pours it to our son, I'm just, I'm just so grateful for. And also, I just need to shout out my sister-in-law. My brother just had his third child today, so Happy Mother's Day to my sister-in-law, Suzette, who has taught me that you can be still fierce but gentle as a lamb. But also, my son constantly serves as a reminder to me every day, something that I've known throughout my whole life, that there's no other love like a mother's love. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, and congratulations to your sister-in-law and your brother. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
I just also want to join in saying Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. My mom is, like a lot of moms, is pretty incredible, and for her, this is her second Mother's Day without her mom, my grandmother. And I know that it is a joyous time for a lot of people, but it can be really painful for those who have difficult maternal relationships. And so, I just want to lift that up and hold space for, for, for people who today, this Sunday, will be a rather difficult one. I know that many of us will be doing the Mother's Day Walk for Peace on Sunday, and we'll be holding up all of the women in our city, all the mothers in our city who have lost their children to violence. So, I just want to thank everyone and everyone's mothers and all the children. So, hopefully, those folks are able to celebrate, and that we're able to hold space for those who will be mourning or reflecting on Sunday.
Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counselors Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, and Murphy, to suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 082, 0823. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please roll a call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0823. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0823 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0823 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0824?
Docket number 0824. Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution recognizing Asian-American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I represent a large AAPI community in District Two. Chinatown is the third largest Chinatown in the country. I have AAPI communities in the South End, Bay Village, and South Boston as well. Outside of my district, there is a large Vietnamese community in Dorchester, a Korean community in Alston and Brighton, a large Cambodian community in Lowell, where my, where my wife is from, as well as other AAPI communities throughout the state. The AAPI community has helped build this nation. One of the most prominent examples being the Chinese immigrants helping to build the transcontinental railroad. Last year was actually 150th year of the completion of this railroad, as they had the ribbon-cutting ceremony outside of Salt Lake City connecting the East Coast and the West Coast. There's a famous photo of the workers that helped build this railroad, and there was hundreds and hundreds of people in this large, famous photo, but in the photo, in the photo, there wasn't one Asian, and they practically built the railroad. Japanese and Filipino immigrants were a huge workforce in places like Hawaii. We also have to acknowledge that during World War II, the United States imprisoned Japanese-Americans, imprisoned them, especially on the West Coast. They're, they're as American as, as we are. They were born here, and we placed them in, in prison, in jail because of their ethnicity. And at the same time, Japanese-Americans were fighting for the United States during World War II. We have a lot of AAPI veterans across this city, across this state. In Boston's Chinatown, we have the American Legion post, that I know many of my colleagues see them at different parades and festivals. This year, they are marking their 75th year of service to the Chinatown and Veterans Community. The post is made up of veterans who served as far back as World War II. Last October, Veterans Commissioner Santiago and I took part in U.S. Army Private Wing Home Hero Square dedication in Chinatown. Private harm was among 20,000 Chinese-Americans who served during World War II, who was killed in action when he was 20 years old, whose body was recently, recently identified and recovered in Italy. The square now sits in front of his home on Beet Street, where he lived more than 80 years ago. It is important that we recognize the contributions of AAPI residents in Boston and Massachusetts across the country, recognize their experience, their contribution, helping build this great city, our great country. This diversity makes us stronger. I'd also acknowledge and like to thank the city's first Asian-American mayor, Mayor Wu. The AAPI community faced discrimination and racism in the past, like the Chinese Exclusion Act. I mentioned the Japanese-Americans during, during World War II. And my final point is, as we look back on the pandemic and the impact it had on this country, the first public meeting on the pandemic, actually, we had it at Josiah Quincy High School, I'm sorry, Josiah Quincy Grammar School. And I was listening to concerns from my assistant, Sophia, talking about COVID-19, the impact it was having over in China, and that it was only a matter of time that it was going to be brought, it was going to be, coming to the United States. And at this meeting, there was a young high school student from Boston Latin, an Asian-American high school student. She got on the train on Washington Street, and she got on the train, and as she got on the train, most of the people on the train, mostly white, they got off the train because they associated this young Asian-American woman, high school student, with COVID-19. And what did we see after that incident, or after the surge of the pandemic here in the country, and the hateful speech by the United States President against the Asian community? Well, we saw hate crimes go up against Asian-Americans. Here in Boston, the most progressive city in the country as well, and other cities, Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Jose. But I think, I think about these Asian-Americans that were assaulted, that were victims of hate crime, or just people yelling stuff at them, associating them with COVID-19. But I also think of their grandkids that I served with in the military, Asian-Americans. And here, their grandkids are their, are their, are their children, are serving our country, whether they're in the Navy, they're in the Marines, the Army. They're putting their life on the line for our country, willing to die for their country. And back home in these great American cities, their older parents, or their older grandparents, or their siblings are being discriminated against because they're Asian. They're being assaulted because they're Asian. But the, as I mentioned about other ethnic groups, but the Asian-Americans have contributed greatly to this country, to this city. I'm proud to represent them, and I just want to continue to acknowledge that they've made significant contributions to this city and to this country, and at the same time, they are not treated with the same level of respect that they've earned and deserve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn, for filing this. Just shout out to all of our staff, my staff, your staff, Counsel Braden's staff, who are also Asian, and to Monique and Trin, have the delight, pleasure to work with them, and they are amazing. I second your thoughts or comments about people just not being seen and being viewed as just a muscle or a machine, or people that can just produce fast and not being humanized. So, uplifting that we need to do more to just... So uplifting that we need to do more to dismantle these types of biases and stereotypes and racism. I had a friend from Nepal personally around COVID time, who, this man just attacked her on the train and just kicked her on her back, and then, if there was no reason, there was no theft, just attacked her and kicked her down, and we had to go through the whole police process. And I can, I remember she then had to go through a lot of therapy to go, to get over that one incident. So it's, it's not okay. And also, here in the city as well, very happy for our mayor, Mayor Wu. As you know, in my time with Ways and Means, I've looked a lot into demographics and fair wages and pay in terms of higher diversity and supply diversity, and we are not where we are, where we need to be in terms of our hiring Asians, or people from Asian community as well, or Pacific Island. So I rise in support and look forward to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
Just want to highlight again, last week, our invocation from Jen Min talked a lot about those stereotypes and a lot about the bamboo ceiling and the limitations even, and debunking the model minority myth. So I want to uplift her, really, I think, impactful words as we reflect on Native American, Native Hawaiian, Asian-American, Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Is anyone else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Orrell. Please add the chair. Counsel Flynn, see suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0824. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0824. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Orrell.
Yes.
Counsel Orrell, yes. Docket number 0824 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0824 has been adopted. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Personnel orders. Docket number 0826, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Mahia. Docket number 0827, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Mahia. And counsel, and docket number 0828, Counsel Louie Jean for central staff appointment.
Thank you. The chair moves to passage of dockets number 0826 to 0828. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders have been passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I will be pulling 0104 from the green sheets. And for my colleagues, I have a resume for Nikita Burns on, on your desks. And early June, I will have another hearing regarding appointments for the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee.
Counsel Durkin, one moment.
Oh, sorry.
The clerk needs to read it into the record.
Go ahead.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0104 into the record?
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0104. Message in order confirming the appointment of Nikita Burns to the Zoning Commission as a residential organization member for the term, for a term expiring October 26, 2026.
Thank you. Absent objection. Docket number 0104 is properly before the body. Counsel Durkin, the floor is now yours.
Thank you so much. As I was saying, early, early June, I will have another appointments hearing. The reason for pulling this specific appointment before, before the body, and I'm looking to vote on this today, the reason for pulling this before the body is because they are having quorum issues, and I want to make sure our, unfortunately, this appointment slipped through the cracks, was an appointment from last year, a holdover when another person was in the chair for this committee. So just want to state some of her accomplishments. I did have a call with her this morning. Nikita Burns is the Legislative Director for the Office of Majority Leader Mike Moran in the 18th Suffolk District, has recently worked for the Massachusetts House Map Illustrator on the Special Joint Committee on Redistricting. She's the current Chair of the Albertine Architectural Conservation District Commission for the City of Boston, the Chair of Boston's Ward 21 Democratic Committee, and a member of the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus Board of Directors. In 2020, Nikita won the Outstanding Capstone Award for her research on collaborative governance and redistricting. Nikita was born in Charlestown, and, and after her mother became one of the first African-Americans to racially integrate the Bunker Hill housing development in 1985, she holds a BA in Sociology and Japanese from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, and a master's degree in Public Administration from the McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies. You know, upon reading her bio, you can tell she's extremely qualified, and this will not be a regular occurrence in this committee. This is a quorum issue that we need to solve. So I ask that my colleagues vote to support this extremely qualified candidate, and we will be having another appointments hearing again in early June, and I hope my colleagues will be able to attend. We have some other folks that are sitting in green sheets. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Counsel Durkin's bringing this, expediting this appointment because of quorum issues. I know Nikita personally. She's the, has worked with Counsel Representative Moran's team for many years, so I know her in my interactions at the, at the local level in Alston, Brighton. She's an incredibly accomplished leader in the community and definitely would be an asset to this committee. So I am just standing in support of moving this today and expediting this appointment, this confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise enthusiastically to encourage my colleagues to vote in favor. Nikita Burns and I have worked professionally on the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus Board, and I can tell that she is a professional through and through, and I believe that she will bring her years of experience in public service to the role of the Boston Zoning Commission. So just wanted to rise to add to the chorus of positive reviews for Nikita. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? She sounds incredible, so. Counselor Durkin, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, moves to passage of docket number 0104. Oh, one moment. Counselor Durkin, is there something?
I just want to...
Counselor Durkin, you now, Counsel Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just want to be clear, this is for the Zoning Commission, and she's the residential seat. And I think a couple people, we just misnamed it a couple times, so I just want to be clear what we're appointing her for. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin, Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, moves to passage of docket number 0104. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are, there is one late file matter. Mr. Clerk, can you please read that late file matter into the record?
One late file matter, absence letter from City Councilor Julia Mahia. Dear Madam President, I'm writing to inform you of my absence from our upcoming city council meeting. While I regret not being able to participate in person, my staff will be in attendance, and I will be reviewing the online stream. Sincerely, Counselor Julia Mahia.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matter, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late file matter has been added to the agenda. The, okay, we are now moving on to the consent. Oh, okay. This letter, this absence letter from Counsel Mahia will be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed to the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now moving on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. If any of my colleagues have any announcements, now is the time. I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to some of our council birthdays with Horizon Starwood, Tony Baez, Sierra Walker, Mark Cohen, Iris Zhao, and Wilmer Quinones, our upcoming May birthdays, so happy birthday. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and wish a very happy birthday to our very own Louis Elisa. He is an amazing leader in District Seven. Happy birthday. And for those of you who've been invited, I see you at the party. Thanks.
See you at the party. Happy birthday, Louis. We are now moving, anyone else? Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. If any of my colleagues would like to speak on anyone, now is the time. I'd like to lift up a few people for us to remember. Rick Slaman, whose father, Boy Slaman, was the manager of Mel King's Merrill campaign. Frank Stella, one of America's greatest, America's great artists that defined critical boundaries and was influential here in our Boston, in the Boston, greater Boston area. Marlene Adonis, the beloved sister of Bernadette Adonis, and Jean E. Christie Haynes, who lost her, who recently passed, and who many of her children and her, the many children that she has reared, who are, the children that she birthed mourn her passing. So may her memory be a blessing. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you. This, actually, just a couple days ago, we lost a very, a very own, we call him by Niu Pu Xing. The Cape Verdean community knows him. He is a storyteller or our own Dr. Seuss for children in West Coast Africa, Cape Verde. I grew up in a home with no TV or refrigerator or, and, you know, grew up growing, laying in a bed with at least 10 children in just one mattress, in a very loving home and filled with amazing memories. And every night, we would gather in a circle, and the oldest person would tell all of the stories from Niu Pu Xing. So very near and dear to my heart. You just would grow up listening to his stories on the radio. I just wanted to send love and prayers to his family.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I wanted to rise to honor the life of Arthur Archie Eisenberg. He lived in my district and, and then now lives in Counsel Tony Fernandez Anderson's district. He was an East Fens resident, 90 years old. As a young man, he delivered goods for his father's pickle business. While at graduate school, he drove an ice cream truck. He began as a social worker with the Jewish Community Center in Brighton. Then he directed and shared ownership of a Boston retirement home. In 1978, he made the transition to academia, retiring after 10 years from his faculty position at Boston University School of Social Work at the age of 55. As a colleague at BU said, "Given the challenges, the highs and lows of the ed field, Archie was always grounded, thoughtful, funny, and present." Some of his East Fens neighbors remember him. The Church Park East Fenway Community will miss his dry humor in seeing him at Symphony Whole Foods Market. He survived by his beloved wife Elaine, four children, six grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren, one honorary grandchild, and one newborn great-grandchild. He was preceded in death by his parents, Morris and Lillian. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Any of my other colleagues? The chair, the chair, a moment of silence, a moment of silence for those we are remembering. The chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, May 15, at 12 noon. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk in the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.[1767.21][1767.21]